All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to stand for the pledge. Did we do it last time?
No.
Do you want to stand for it? We're not going to do it then. All right, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are going to hear from Mary Ann and the Board of Education Budget, kind of going through kind of the highlights on their budget and kind of just same processes we had for the operational budget on, whatever that was, Monday night. Monday night, whatever that other night was. So I'll give it to Mary Ann, and she can walk us through.
What you've got on the screen is capital, which we did not get into previously. So capital can be amended at the manager's level. I did not amend what was requested by the Board of Ed. Superintendent, I did have a conversation about the projects and how they might be adjusted, whether or not they're things that could be funded out of, before the end of the fiscal year. And then, at my level, up until this point, we really haven't used undesigned fund balance for Board of Ed projects because they've been smaller dollar amount, more transitory expenditures, not things that have a long-term payback on it. This year, the boiler replacement project is of a scale and something that is going to be a longer-term investment. So that particular project is proposed to be funded out of undesigned fund balance. Everything else is proposed to come out of taxation. And you have in your book, the five-year request from the Board of Ed, you have the detail sheets that back up these projects. And I'll leave it to Mary Ann to go from there.
Okay, so I can, as Carl did the other night, give a just quick update on each of the capital projects, just so you have a little bit more info than what's on that line related to each of them. And then I can answer questions, and then we can go into the operating budget if you have questions or things for me to clarify. So starting at, I'm just trying to see where we are. So starting at the Joel School, we have the painting of wings, hallways, ceilings. That has to do with some follow-up work, painting roof and around skylights after our roof projects and replacement of skylights that have occurred. There's repair work and things that happen. So we really do need to have a contractor come in and take care of that for us. So that's that first one. That's near the gym, that hallway, the library area, and then the length of the third and fourth grade wing. The next one is Joel bathroom upgrades. Our bathrooms are in need of some upgrade. We looked at, you know, the ability to kind of retile and do the whole thing. That obviously would be much more pricey and expensive. So we started to look at different ways that we can upgrade and refinish. And what we're proposing is to refinish, which is to completely clean, regrout, seal, and paint the tile, and then paint the walls. We also have a separate lighting project that's not here. We're not looking for funding for that will refresh the lighting. So we are going to take that approach to our bathrooms at Joel. And this $40,000 represents two bathrooms, one near the cafeteria, boys and girls, and then one down the hallway that's used by students in the classrooms. Actually, both of them are. I don't know if it's locked or not.
She locked herself out.
Next year, there's the third bathroom, big bathroom in the school is there. So we phased it out over two years. Okay, the next one is the project that Carl talked about, which is the Elliott Boiler Replacement Controls. This is a larger project related to our boilers, our HVAC, and then the pneumatic controls, those controllers on the walls in the classrooms. So right now, we have no control or automated logic control over half of the Elliott building. And so this project and of our boilers, we have some old pneumatic controls that can't be fixed or repaired. If they break, we'll be kind of manually turning on and off boilers. Fortunately, we're coming out of the winter, and we made it through. So this amount is to support that project where we would be replacing the pneumatic controls in the boiler room as well as extending that to the classrooms so that we can manage, be more efficient, but also manage the building as it relates to heat. The next one on there is the Morgan's School. We have $15,000 for the painting of hallways. We're in year seven right now, so we're going into year eight. And what we've done is created a phasing plan for painting different regions of the building. It really does require an outside company being able to hire and do that entire region. So this is going to be, I believe, the D Wing, which is an up and down, and the entrance area to that. And then you'll see in our plan, over time, we have different areas of Morgans that, over the course of, I think, five years, we would have done the painting and updated to maintain that facility. The next one is our computer upgrades and replacement. That has, that's a larger dollar amount, $126, $119. That represents our Chromebook replacements. We have a cycle where we replace fifth-grade Chromebooks, and they keep those Chromebooks through the middle school. And then we replace ninth grade, and they maintain them through the high school. So this supports the purchase of the fifth and ninth-grade Chromebooks as part of our replacement plan. And then it also supports the staff laptop lease, where each of our staff members have a laptop, and they last four to five years. We have a lease program that helps smooth out the increases in costs, and we've been doing that for a while now. So that number represents both of those things. The next one is the LCD projectors and mounting. So at the Morgan's School, again, we're going into year eight. So the projectors that teachers use for instruction in the classroom are failing. We need to do a replacement. And that number represents, again, the ability to replace, and it's a lease program as well with these. So we have all the repairs and support for them over the course of the span of these projectors. The next one, the security network upgrades replacement. You'll see this, you have seen it over the years. It's $22,000. The next place to do some upgrades is related to our Elliott cameras and the servers that support that at Elliott. So the cameras are an integral part of our safety system, our entryway, as well as they're external primarily to the school at all of our entries. And they're part of our safety and security plan, as well as being able to support security in our building. The next one is floor covering. This is a standard. We have kind of a map and a plan for our floor covering. For a while, we were replacing carpet in classrooms with tile. We've completed that work. This now, we're looking at hallways and areas. So this represents the entire art wing hallway at Elliott. We have some cracking and peeling. It does involve asbestos remediation for that tile area, but a retile. And then there's some areas in our central offices at the entryway. There's some replacement scheduled as part of that number. The next one's furniture replacement. This is targeted towards teachers' desks, chairs, file cabinets, bookshelves. We did a lot with student tables, desks, and chairs with grant funding. So during COVID, we received some grant funding, and we needed to do spacing of students. So we kind of accelerated what we normally do as a replacement plan for furniture. So we don't have a need there, but we do have a need for some of the other components in classrooms. And this is at Joel and Elliott. This number won't get us there completely, but it does allow us to keep kind of an update of those components. The next one is an equipment replacement. Again, we have a replacement cycle for custodial and maintenance equipment that we use district-wide. So things like snow blowers, vacuums, floor buffers, and there's a rotation and a replacement plan for those items. And so that's what this money is supporting. The next one is classroom door replacement. We have done a lot of work on security with our Clinton Police Department and using the safety checklist. And we identified two doors. It says classroom door, but they're actually egress and external doors from classrooms that are not completely functional and really need replacement. So this includes the doors, as well as some work of the frame of the door, but they were identified as part of those safety walkthroughs, and both of those are at Joel. And then the last piece is fencing, and that also is a request related to a safety and security walkthrough, taking a look at our playground area. And we have, there's some hiking trails and some paths that slope down to that side of the Joel School. And what we're looking to do is extend the fencing and at least create a little more of a barrier between the woods and access to our playgrounds and fields where our kids are at recess. And that was done in conjunction with the safety walk with our Clinton Police Department. So that's what that request is for, and it's at Joel School. So that's the broad overview. I don't know if you have any questions about any of these projects in this year's request.
Can I ask a question, just about the LCD projectors?
Yep, yes.
I know we don't talk about individual projects, but I'm just curious. $55,000 is a lease payment for how many of these items?
It will replace every projector that's at the Morgan's School right now. So it's every classroom, it's the conference rooms that have them, it's throughout the entire building. So I can get the specific numbers from Frank and Mike?
So that's one lease payment? That's not?
That is correct. That is correct. And I can give you the detail of all of that.
I'd be curious to know what the recurring cost going forward. Thank you.
Absolutely. I'll get that to Carl tomorrow.
I have one little comment. Every couple of years, I bring this up, Mary Ann. And that's, you know, we have that fund that we put money into, and I know we tapped it once. How much do we have left in that fund? Do we know?
It's on the town side, so I don't know. I think it's 500?
The town controls that. I think it's, I want to say 600 now.
Is it?
Still $600,000? Because I'm just wondering if that $200,000 for the boilers there could be taken out of there maybe this year, if it's possible, just to help alleviate the capital side of the situation. As you may or not have heard us the other night, we are talking about, this is an extraordinary year. I think you were here, Mary Ann.
I was. I do. I do.
We have a lot of extraordinary expenses coming up in capital this year, in case people weren't here the other night. And you know, we're, so any little bit that we can to alleviate the impact on the residents and the taxpayers would help. And I think $200,000 coming out there, that would really help us, if it's possible, that we could tap that fund.
So I, no, I agree.
That's all.
So I know Carl has kind of approached it and tagged it as that idea for, right? I don't want to speak for you, but in the column for appropriation, but which accounts?
We did speak about whether or not that pot made some sense for some of these projects, because that's been some of the go-to in prior budgets of, can that be funded out of the non-lapsing account? The non-lapsing account was meant to address extraordinary special ed expenses as well as capital. The special ed side was meant to respond to somebody moves into the district that has extraordinary expenses that were not assumed in the budget, whether that's an outplacement or an inplacement that's more expensive than we thought. The capital part has been where we've gone. I think there's some other capital projects in the pipeline that are potential big-ticket items, and that kind of caused a little bit of hesitation as to whether or not we should be dipping into the non-lapsing account now, if there's more stuff coming over the hill in the next year or two. So that was just sort of the thought process we had discussing it.
Yeah, there's two that I, well, three things that I want to mention in terms of out-year. So in the '24, '25 year, you'll see at Elliott, a million-dollar window replacement, eighth-grade wing. And Dennis, you've seen this a lot, like, just over the years. It's been there. We've pushed it out. They did one of the wings the year before I became superintendent. I think it was '15, '16 was when they did it. And then the seventh and eighth-grade wing was supposed to be done, you know, a year out or whatever, with all the roofs and other projects and bonding. It was kind of pushed, and we've pushed. So where we are right now, I mean, that million dollars is an estimate. The project in '16, '15, '16, or '16, '17 was just under $600,000, I think, for that wing. So we escalated it. It's a number. We're in the process of getting plan design so that we can cost it and the architectural design. But what we did find out is that window replacement project that's here as a placeholder is reimbursable by the state, like a roofing project is. Okay? So that is great news, right? But we have to have architectural plans and designs, and we have to go through the whole state application process for grants. But what that means is we have to have approval for whatever the cost of the project is by the town. In the past, with roof projects, it's been a referendum on the bonding, right? And I know I've listened enough to know that we want to try to not think about that. So I don't know how that wants to get handled, but I do want to put that on there. We've pushed it off a lot. And I do think it's time, and it's a priority from our Building and Ground Subcommittee, that we put this here, and we make sure that we talk with all of you and with Carl about it for that future planning. I don't know that non-lapsing is something that would apply there, but that's one of the projects. And then the other is, some of you may be aware that we've had some septic issues and plumbing piping issues at both Joel and Elliott with pipes that are, some are crumbling. They've been outside. We've been able to do those repairs within our operating budget, the one at Elliott. But we're in the process now where we have an internal pipe. We're assessing the issue at Elliott that we think has failed. And we may have to do a project that actually abates and cuts into the hallway at Elliott into the ground, replacing the pipe. So we're diagnosing that right now, and that's an emergency repair. So again, I don't know what the scope of that cost could be, but I, we're trying to get the number. That, to me, is something that I'd probably have to turn and say, is it the non-lapsing that we can do? Because right now, we have a set of bathrooms near the gym, as well as in our locker rooms at Elliott that we can't use until we can repair this. So we're functioning. So those are kind of the two bigger things. We did do a facility study that looked at our HVAC a little closer. We've been replacing units, but there's a lot of internal things, as well as some opportunity at the state level to apply for grant money and reimbursable money for some HVAC upgrades. And a lot of it has to do with improving ventilation, and it has to do with bringing in cooling to schools. And so there's money potentially available. It was a one-shot deal, but we're hoping at the state that they will continue that because it's aging infrastructure. The other piece I want to mention related to capital is the board did do a study using our ARCA funds, the ARPSR funds, of our HVAC. And so we have this priority plan. We used Colliers, who worked with us on the high school project. So we have a plan for Joel and Elliott related to the priority areas that need to be fixed and maintained. And so we've been using that to guide us a little bit. And that is part of what has led to concepts around the window replacement that's in here, as well as the fact that we are doing a major HVAC renovation at Joel. It will happen this summer. It's been approved at the board level using our ARPSR money. And that's about a $900,000 project to replace all of the antiquated HVAC, to upgrade our kitchen and serving area with heating and cooling. And we will have air conditioning now in our cafeteria at Joel, which is a nice, big community space as well. So that's money we used from our ARPSR grant to do that. So we're trying to find those ways. Where's it reimbursable? How can we do that? And keep it out of this capital plan. But the one, that window project, I think, is one we're going to have to have a little more conversation about. So that's more info, Dennis, than you asked for, but I think just forecasting a little bit, some of that, those are some of the things on the horizon for us.
That was helpful. The window project, did you say that there's potential state funding for that?
There is, yes. So that would go through the DAS, the State Construction Grant Program, the way our roofs do. And it actually becomes a town project, so there's a town committee. But it has to have the funding approved upfront. So let's say it is a million-dollar project. The town would have to have minutes that show that they've allocated the money. We then apply at the state, and then we get reimbursed to the cost of the project back to the town. So it's, right now, the reimbursement rate's around 44%, 45%, like the building project was at the high school. So we absolutely want to leverage that. And so we're in the planning phase. We're trying to get the architectural plans and the design plans, and then a cost proposal so we have some idea of what the cost will be for that project. And then we'll be talking with Carl and figuring out timing of all of that, and then applying for a state grant related to it.
So some simple math, if it's a million dollars, and they give you 40%, you get 400 grand. And you need 600 grand, and that's what we have.
Yeah, actually, yeah.
If it's still there.
So, and I will put the plug in. I don't know. It hasn't been the practice. We did it that one year. But that is, you know, part of legislation and state statute. And I know surplus will probably come up tonight. But when there is any kind of end-of-year surplus, the ability, and that's how that 600 got there, the ability to take a percentage, I think it's up to 2%, but definitely 1%, and put it in a non-lapsing fund so that you can. But it's controlled by the town. And right now, your town policy says it can only be used for capital, right? And I don't know if it says emergency, but capital as well as special ed costs. And we would have to come to the town to request it based on, and have it vetted based on what our need might be.
Carl, does that town policy have a cap as to how much or guideline as to how much would be in that fund?
No. And we created it in one year because there was a surplus. We did not recapitalize it, so it's kind of been at a certain threshold. We haven't, thankfully, had the need to dip into it for responding to an unanticipated special ed expense. So it's really been more a capital financing tool. But, you know, as you spend it down, if it's not going to get recap capitalized, it's going to become static. And it would only be recap capitalized with whatever dollars the Board of Ed turns back to the town. But that's a sort of a policy conversation. And we didn't go there just because it was such a, it was a new concept, and we wanted to get it created, get some experience with it, and then kind of go from there. So that would be part of a conversation. It doesn't have to happen tied to the budget, but it's a policy conversation for the council.
Smart. And it's helpful to have the five-year plan to smooth things out. That's exactly what that's for, right?
So we are in the process as well as part of our strategic plan. We have a 10-year plan, but it's not as fleshed out and, I think, as strong as I want it to be. So one of the objectives in our strategic plan is, within a year, to have a good, solid, you know, five to seven. If we can get to 10, it's hard to push out. But a good plan to be able to share very clearly with Carl and the town council that lays out these things so that, for budgeting purposes, we are able to, and you are able to kind of consider that, and we know what's on the horizon, just like Carl's doing and all of his conversation the other night about capital and what projects are coming. I want to be able to provide that to him as soon as I can so that it's part of the big-picture conversation. But we do currently have a 10-year plan with these things there. We're just going to give you, I think, more robust plan coming soon.
Anybody else?
Okay, so Carl put up this object page. You know, I presented, was it two weeks ago now? You have, I hope, a copy of my budget book. I have the presentation and the highlights. You know, I can do a quick overview, or we can just jump into things that you have questions about, whatever the town council or members desire.
I don't think Hank was here for that. Was Hank? No, he wasn't.
No, he was here, I think, right? You were here the night I presented.
He was. Oh, that's right. That was next night. Okay, good.
So whatever way, I can start with an overview, or we can just dig into questions that you all might have about the budget.
What do you want? Why don't you give it a broad stroke overview again?
Yes, please.
Okay. So is it okay if I use this object, kind of high-level page? And I will just note, in your budget books, and I'm going to reference it, I can do most of it from memory, but I will reference to you, in your budget books, there is on page 15, it takes each of these objects, and it gives a little bulleted summary of what's driving it. But I'll walk through it. So you can see, I kind of, the way our objects work, we cluster the salary and benefits there at the top. It is the largest part of our budget request. And at this point, as I reported in my presentation, we do have a decrease in certified salaries. We have been adjusting to declining enrollment over the past several years. We closed Pearson in 1920. And we have applied our class size standards, if you will, and our staffing overview and question each year to, are we staffed appropriately? And looking at trying to maintain the needs and services of kids, not just with a fixed class size, but also what are we seeing? What does our data tell us? What do our assessment results tell us? And obviously, coming out of COVID, the needs that we have, both for learning recovery as well as mental health supports that, you know, our kids definitely need. So the certified salaries line does represent an overall reduction of certified staff members. That's primarily a team at the middle school. When you go in a little further, maybe it's back, there's a page in here related to our class sizes. So you can take a look at that under the enrollment tab. But it's really a representative of that offset. The non-certified salaries is increasing a bit. The increase represents some negotiated salary increases related to our non-certified staff. So our paraeducators or classroom assistants, our administrative assistants in our offices, our terms of employment, behavior technicians would all be in this account. This does represent an increase because of a state mandate that was passed starting July 1 that requires 18 hours of paid time for each paraeducator for professional development. So that is represented partially in this increase. There's also money set aside, as Carl has talked about, on the town side. We have, our paraeducators are entering into negotiations, so there's no salary increase that's specifically budgeted on the more specific line items. But it is included in this particular line, and we account for that in district-wide under unsettled negotiated contracts. So we put in just an estimated amount to try to cover whatever that settlement might be. And then this does include the addition of two behavior technicians that were in our ARPSR grant. We brought them in. We've paid for them for the past couple of years. They support our students in our schools that receive IEP services and are in need of that programming. And so those are positions that the board determined we needed to keep. And so those did get moved into this line item. So that increase, it is offset by the reduction of two paraeducators, but the cost difference of a behavior technician and their expertise is a little higher. So that's the increase there. And then employee benefits, Carl has talked about this. We're in the Connecticut State Partnership Plan. We moved to that about four or five years ago. We saved like a million dollars when we did that from our old plan. And we're just now, in our budgeted amount, getting back to where we were prior to switching. So it really has been a benefit. As Carl has said, we started at 12%. They gave us a different range. We brought that. And this represents at the 10% overall. But because we have some staff reductions and other changes in our census, it's not being budgeted. The amount we need is actually a 6%. We're hopeful that maybe that will continue to trend in the right direction, and we'll see a little bit of a decrease that maybe Carl can apply as we go forward. But at this point, we're basing it on what has been provided to us by the state and our census and what we anticipate for our employees.
What's the organization that we got aligned with that saved us a million dollars?
It's the Connecticut State Partnership Plan, and so that has been in place for Connecticut State employees for years. And I don't know, 10 years ago or so, they've made it.
We both were in a self-insured pool that includes some Shoreline Board of Ed. And I think we were the only municipal group left.
Yes.
There were some questions about how they operated. There were some questions about transparency. There were some questions about how insurance is operated. The Board of Ed made a decision to get out earlier. I attended a number of meetings, asked probably the same questions Mary Ann asked, got the same non-answers. So it kind of made sense for us to not participate in a program where there's no transparency. The State Partnership Plan has to be negotiated. That was negotiated for us three years ago. So it was not, the town saved money when we moved over to that. So the idea is you're piggybacking off of the state's insurance purchasing. Larger pool, larger number of bodies, so you can get a better insurance price than you would by yourself if you were a small group on the general market.
The other towns around us do that?
There's many, many towns of Boards of Ed that are in that program. There's many, many towns and Boards of Ed that are in that program. The ones that aren't are mainly the much larger organizations where they have the size where that employee base is credible from an underwriting standpoint so that they have enough bodies where it can stand on its own. We're, we're both too small to be quote-unquote credible from an insurance underwriting standpoint.
Okay, employee benefits also does include some of the other benefits like social security, Medicare, those kinds of line items that are in there. We don't have any major increases in those areas, but it does, it does include that as well. Okay, so as, as we look, I'll just kind of hit the, the larger increases that probably need a little more explanation. And then if you have a little one that you want to talk about, we can. So professional technical services obviously jumps out, that is a large increase. That $162,000, it's almost $163,000, is really about a couple of things. One is the services for special education students that are specialized, that we need to contract and bring people in to meet their needs, are accounted for in several line items that make up this object. And we have seen some significant increases in a couple of types of contracted services we have to provide. So that is driving this number somewhat. But we also have increased costs for actuary, I think it's 20 or 30,000 dollars this year, that there are certain schedules that have to be done every other year. So this is the year that the actuarial costs go up, you'll see that if you look at the line items. We also were, found ourselves without an athletic trainer at the high school this year. The, the number of trainers and models in the state have, they've had a tough time finding trainers. We've had a trainer now full-time for seven or eight years, and so suddenly we were without one. We were able to, many of our colleagues were not able to, but we were able to contract with Yale Health Services. And we now have a full-time trainer onboard. But it did cost us a $25,000 increase. So we were able to do that this year within our budget. But you'll see that increase on the athletic trainer line next year. And that was a decision made by the Board of Ed earlier this year. And then there's a little bit of increase in some in-service training costs. This July 1, the state legislature passed what's called the Right to Read legislation, which mandates certain reading programs to be utilized in our K through 2 time span for students to learn reading, writing, and all literacy aspects. And it is, that legislation has forced schools to look at their programming. We were already in process and well on our way. But there is some professional development around the new reading curricula, the new reading approach called the Science of Reading that is embedded. And so there's, there's maybe like a $12,000 increase pushing on this line related to that professional development. You will see further down in staff development, we have a decrease of 23747 down the list. So it, it's in a different category because this is outside, people coming in to, to help train and make sure that we have the expertise among our staff. But we're offsetting that with some reductions in staff development on that other line. Okay? So that is one of the biggest increases. But that, that particular line would be $80,000 higher, so it actually would be 242. One of the additional things that the board did this year was, we made a decision and we are not contracting our nursing services any longer. So we reevaluated how we can provide those services with the same staffing and the same level of service, hopefully the same people, but by bringing that under the umbrella of the Board of Ed. And in doing so, we've saved about $80,000.
So you took $80,000 out here, but how do, how do you provide that service now, that nursing?
So the $80,000, that's, so right now, we, we used to contract with VNA. They were bought out by a Yale Health Group a year ago. And so the way that that has played out has impacted us a little bit. And they were not sure that, we're the only group that they could contract with, with a school. So they're looking to kind of move on and we were looking to maybe continue it. The $80,000 savings really is me and central office taking on payroll, taking on human resources, taking on hiring, you know, benefits, that side of it, and just administering it under our central office. That's where that savings comes from. The rest of the salaries are on that line still. But when you go into the detail of it in district-wide, you'll see nursing services going from about 410 to 3, minus 80, it would be 330. So you'll see that $80,000 difference there. And really, we're picking up those services that we used to pay the contractor to manage hiring personnel and management of human resources primarily.
That athletic trainer that you said you got, that's in the, is that in the 2022, 2023 number?
So we had it, if you, if you look in the request by Cost Center, it's the last page of that section is the athletic budget. So this year, we had for athletic trainer, we had budgeted 35693.
Yep.
So it's page 47. So it's the fourth line down, athletic trainer, it's 35693. And you can see the, it's an increase of 20,000. Sorry, I said it was a little high. Okay, so what, what happened was we didn't have a trainer for the first part of the year. So we're not going to overexpend it to the, the $55,000. But once we got a full-time trainer onboard, there may be a slight overage to this number, but we've worked the services this year to make it work with the number. And then we had to budget for it for next year. And that's a 30-hour-a-week position. So they're onsite, 30 hours supporting our teams, our athletes, practice, games, and events.
So are you saying that we are going to try to go back to what we had for our own athletic trainer? Or are you going to stick with Yale?
Yeah, so as, as far as athletic training, it's a separate contract. We were contracting with PTSMC, so the physical therapy and sports medicine. They're in Westbrook was the, the connection for us, right? We had contracted with them for years and it was about $35,000. But there's a dearth of athletic directors. And most of the PTSMCs, they tried to hire, tried to hire, and they weren't able to do so. So through Yale, they have a bigger cadre, they can give different experiences in training, and they've been able to hire athletic trainers. But it's a slight, slightly higher cost. So we will continue our contract with Yale, but the athletic trainer is assigned just to us at Morgan. So we're not sharing it, they're here at Morgan and they serve our students 30 hours a week, students and coaches.
Well, Mike Everton also, Yale, this is the first year, then next year.
We'll have to see. Let's hope not, let's hope not.
Would you continue looking for an individual as opposed to this contract with Yale?
So actually, there, there are one or two school districts that have hired their own because they weren't anywhere to be found. And they're actually paying more than we are. So they're, they're paying around 65, 70,000 dollars and then also have benefits and other things for their athletic trainers. It's a market thing, there just aren't, Equine Payak is no longer producing their athletic trainers. They used to have a program, they eliminated that program. And it's not a lot of money. And you have to have a master's degree and lots of hours and.
Does it have to be 30 hours?
So 30 hours allows them to, to cover the games and the things that they need and also do that time.
So this is over a seven-day week?
Yes, yeah. So if there's, there's events on Saturday, that's, yep. They cover our events and make sure that they're there to support our coaches and our kids.
A lot of events, works, work nights.
It's a huge, I mean, as the Board of Ed spent time, it, it's a huge safety liability and service to make sure that our student athletes are supported. And that was the decision that the board made. And we were really fortunate because there are other districts that still don't have a trainer.
Plus nights, lot of nights.
Nights, you're right.
How many coaches you pay?
How many coaches? I can tell you. I have to flip to my page, but I have my athletic coaches. Give me a second. Section 3. And again, I can send it if you'd like.
And they're all stipends, right? There's no.
Current coaches.
All coaches are paid by stipends.
They're all by stipends. And they're governed, so Chris's question was how many coaches and how are they paid? So they're paid by stipends in the athletic contract. I will note that our stipends are much lower than many of our surrounding towns. They are, they are. And they, we do look at ratios for our number of athletes for both safety. We've adjusted a couple of times where maybe numbers go down in one sport, up in another, we'll make that adjustment. So I have to add quick, but if I, you know, for fall, we have 7, 10, 12, 14. We have 15 coaches in the fall at, this is Morgan. In the winter, we have 7, 10, 12. We have 14 in the winter. And then in the spring, we have 14. Oh, they totaled it. So we, we did, I think, I heard most of your question around sharing with Westbrook-Sabre. So I did mention that we did agree to enter into a regional co-op program with Westbrook and Sabre, which will help sustain our football programs. So there is some cost-sharing benefit. So the board was able to take about a $10,000 decrease from the athletic lines. We reduced coaching a little bit and we reduced equipment a little bit because of that partnership. I think we'll be able to refine more as the years go out to really see what other savings we might find. But right now, we have one coaching vacancy on our football team. So we got rid of that stipend, knowing that that coach would be provided from another team. So we will be looking at the number of students and what that coaching staff needs to be. But yes, we would share kind of coaching salaries, we would share equipment costs. We might have to do a little more with transportation, depending on, you know, how that works. So usually what co-ops do is they look at the overall costs of the program and they kind of divide it out based on the number of your student athletes. So they almost do a per-student-athlete amount. And then each member kind of contributes that amount.
You'll contribute more than a third then, obviously.
We probably would because we're going to, right now, our numbers in football are stronger than those other two schools. But we're decreasing too. So the number that are coming out next year is, is lower. This year, we had 35 students. You know, we may be down another eight or 10, depending on who comes out. So that number with Sabre and Westbrook. But they don't have the same roster that we have had traditionally. But there's no youth program and they're trying to build that back collaboratively that hopefully would help sustain the program as well. That's not us, but it impacts our numbers. Okay. So the next big one that probably, you know, our repairs and maintenance costs, I'll just quickly hit on that this is really preventative maintenance on our HVAC's filters and the recommended PMs that we have to do to make sure that they're operating appropriately. There's a little bit of an increase in some of those costs and in the contracts. There's a little bit in our software maintenance contracts. We have, you know, many, many instructional softwares. And then we have software that manages human resources and state reporting and student information. All of those have increased just a little bit, so there's a slight increase there. And then 26,000 of that has to do with the new town bid awards that we, we work with the town, that bid went out. And there's a 14, 5, 69 increase in our septic costs and a 12, 650 in our refuse removal, just based on the cost of those bids. And I know Carl and Todd have talked about the increase in those services. So the next big one is transportation, and that's always a big question, right?
You didn't, you didn't look at utilities?
I can, oh yeah, the 156, sorry. He moved it on me. So yeah, utilities, the 156 is electricity. So I'm going to tell you where we're at with electricity. And we are way under-budgeted this year in our electricity. We had been doing great, as Carl had said, we had been using market rates. We have solar at two of our buildings that offset a little bit. And as the market has changed, we took a look and our costs have gone way up as it has all over the place. So we have recently, and the Board of Ed has locked into a lower kilowatt hour to try and control our costs. It's higher than what it has been, it's probably double what it has been. But what we're paying now is like triple and quadruple of where we were.
At our introductory talk last week or whenever it was, you mentioned 48 cents a kilowatt hour.
At Morgan.
How is that possible?
Either in December or January, that's what Eversource gave us, that's the supply side. But that's what it's being charged. And then because of the size of the building as a user, right? The number of kilowatt hours puts it in a particular category. Joel and Elliott are a little bit less of a user related to electricity, so their kilowatt hour category is a little less. But it went to 48 cents. And then it's going to come down a little to, you know, 42, 38. They do it by quarter for Morgan and by half-year for, right, for the others. So we did lock in, we did go out, Carolyn did a lot of work on the, to lock in a, a lower rate. And the other thing that the board has been doing for the last year is exploring LED lighting conversion using Eversource rebates and incentives. So that, the town did it a number of years ago, I know DPW was done. So we've been, we spent about a year on that. And just at our Building and Ground Subcommittee, we're moving forward with that. We're waiting for the information for Eversource. So kind of two things, we locked in that rate, which will, the, the 156 is related to that. Even at that rate, it would be more, and it was more when we started. And then we're also implementing the LED lighting at Joel and Elliott, which hopefully will get done this summer. And it's through Eversource financing, so there's no outlay, you just kind of play it.
So the solar, solar installations on the schools has no impact on what?
No, it does, it does.
I mean, it seems like they're overcharging so that they're not really giving you anything for the solar credits.
But the solar isn't through Eversource, so the solar is through Green Skies. And they give us a certain, so there's a certain amount of our kilowatt hours that are reduced on the bill based on what we generate in solar. But then we also have to pay a certain amount for kilowatt hour for the solar as well in that contract. So we've spent a lot of time with our Building and Ground Subcommittee, looking at our electricity. We've done great, if you look at the numbers from the time we opened Morgan, it's gone straight down, our trending. But this, this, you know, skyrocketing in the supply charges is throwing it back up. So we're hopeful with the LED lighting, maybe we can bring that number down a little bit. But I can't, you know, we're budgeting what we know based on our fixed rate it's going to be. And then hopefully, if we install the LED lighting, we can have some savings, but.
So that is just electricity, not water?
So that 156 increase is just electricity. But public utilities as a whole includes electricity and water.
Okay.
Okay? But the increase is electricity. The water, we've kept flat based on trending and, you know, they shut the water off last year in drought.
Are you saying we pay 48 cents per kilowatt?
We did for one month, for one month, one month. It spiked and then we worked to lock in the rate.
Yeah, if you get, you have Eversource at home? Have you looked at your bill?
My rate's doubled.
Yeah, I did. Well, I was a third party and I'm only paying 12 and a half right now.
Yeah, we're at 13, what was it, 13.9, Carolyn will tell me.
13.9.
13.9.
I can get your cost of waste right now for 14.9.
But that's supply side, you still got to pay distribution.
Correct.
That's the supply side, yeah.
Supply and delivery are two different.
I just wonder how, how, for one month, we get buried with that 40?
Because that's where that spike went to. We didn't anticipate, we knew this, there was a spike, they gave us a heads up, it's going to increase. So we started looking at third-party. We've never had to, we've been at like 6 cents per kilowatt hour and doing really, really well. But we got, you know, the projections like everybody else, it's coming, it's coming. We never anticipated that. But in the meantime, we had been looking at third-party and the board just approved the, the lock-in and we were able to lock in at 13.9. So the calculation for this number is at that, which is part of why we were higher. Like we've made these cuts and adjustments over the last couple of months to get to this number. I'm hopeful we're going to save off of that number, but I can't predict that. We got to get to the LED piece and then that will control lighting in Joel and Elliott and maybe bring those costs down. But we'll see.
Solar helps? And would more solar help more?
So we don't really have the capacity to add a whole lot more solar on Joel or Elliott. Elliott is pretty much at capacity, the amount of solar we have on that, those roofs. And then we just replaced the roofs at Joel and we had to remove the panels and put them back on. There are a couple of areas at Joel that we can do it, but we're, the cost benefit to putting solar panels on a brand-new roof is not something that the board felt they wanted to take a chance on.
Yeah, there may be some state stuff, I don't, I don't know if there is. But there is federal incentives and state incentives to help.
Oh, that's different too, commercial residential.
Sure, yeah. I mean, there were, there's always some groups that reach out and say, let us do an analysis. And we usually will take a look, but there's not a lot of roof space. If you, you know, come in at Joel, you can see most of the roof and you'll see. If you, you know, come in at Joel, you can see most of the roof and you'll see the extensive arrays of panels on the Joel roof already. And then at Elliott, you can't really see it, unless like, maybe you come down the hill. But you, our gym is covered with them, and then we have a whole nother section that's covered with panels.
If they come out and do the grid, they probably maximize the grid when they first come out. So I mean, it's kind of like, and then that's the way they kind of get you to pay more money because they say, oh, we can put a couple more here, a couple more there, but then they charge you to put those panels on, so then does the cost for the, put those panels on outweigh what you're really gonna save? So at that point, I mean, you're kind of...
Yeah, we, we haven't seen it as a cost advantage or an efficiency at this point to add more panels, and we're trading off the warranties on our roofs and everything else. I'm looking at Dennis, he was on our roof committee, right, and what we went through with the company we were working with. So we will always keep exploring if there are ways to do it, but I'd love to find a ground-level place that we could throw some panels.
There's a, a new one, instead of being horizontal, it's vertical. So it's not on your roof, but it's like a, its own building, you know, like a, like a cell tower.
Interesting.
Don't, don't know anybody that has one?
Right. Well, the technology changes so fast. I mean, our solar panels are also older now, you know, and so we've got another, I think, 10 years on them or eight years on them, but they're not the newest technology. Okay, so let me do transportation, right? So that 94, 314 is basically increase in diesel fuel costs, which is contained in our transportation. We're estimating about 25,000 based on pricing and trending, and then an increase. And then the other is really related to out-of-town, special services transportation, an increase of about $42,000, which is specialized transportation for students who have to attend schools outside of the district. We do a bunch of things there. We try to ride-share, we try to combine students where possible. Some of the transportation costs, there is a page in this book towards the back that lays out, and you can see if you look at different places that students are attending, their tuition maybe like twice as much as another student and their transportation could be. Sometimes those numbers also include an aide that might need to ride with the student, so just, just know that, like it does, in some of those cases, it includes that and some it doesn't. You can see the distances, some of, it's a more of a van or car transportation, in other cases, it is a bus.
The cost of that aide is in the transportation line?
Say that again?
The cost of that aide?
Yes, so it is in that. It's embedded in there, where you see some of the more expensive transportations for special services. The other piece, though, is that we are, we just, we're about to approve, we have negotiated a, a new transportation extension amendment to our contract. The cost of transportation has skyrocketed. Bids were coming in at, you know, 8% to 12% increases, and then in the out-years, 8%. We are, we have negotiated, we expect to be able to, to continue with our transportation company at a much, much lower increase over the next couple of years. And then we're also, in working with them, we got some changes within the language of the contract, which will benefit the district if we reduce routes and buses. And then I did go back, since 17, when I became superintendent, my first budget, 17, 18, we've reduced from 25 to 18 buses. So in relation to declining enrollment, the closure of Pearson, and then rerouting. So we do look at it every year. We're gonna reduce one more bus. We have 19 this year, we're gonna go down to 18 next year, as well as we think an adjustment to a midday run, which is not a huge expense, but it does help. So we'll look at that and we'll keep looking at that, but we got some pretty favorable rates. And the way transportation works is a per-bus-per-day cost. And our per-bus-per-day cost, even with the new contract and an increase, is still well below many of our neighbors who use the same company. And that's because the board has gone out to bid a number of times and has kind of brought those prices down. So even with a little bit higher increase in this round of contract, we're still kind of well below the market. But that increase is not, we're offsetting the increase in the bus transportation M&amp;J by a reduction of a bus. That increase truly is around that out-of-district transportation. Yet other lines, there's a few decreases, some small increases and decreases. Most of those, those other lines are really around inflationary costs for things that we need to do, the cost of goods and materials that I know Carl has talked about, that is pushing some lines to go up a little, but then we also are looking at some decreases and things that we can, yeah, Carl, just wanna... Some decreases that we can offset. You know, we've done a lot in printing and copying that have reduced our costs over time, and we have another small reduction this year. So we keep looking for ways to, to do that. And I'm happy to provide any other information or answer any other questions that you might have. I guess before I do, I just want to say that, you know, this, this was probably the most challenging budget year that I've had. It's always challenging, right? And we always work hard as a administrative team with the Board of Ed to, to bring in as low a budget as we can and still meet the needs of kids. And as I said in my presentation, there's great need, it's much greater on every level, instructionally, in supporting kids and activities, in staffing needs than it's ever been in my tenure as superintendent. And the idea that we understand that, that, you know, paying taxes is difficult and people are struggling. We see that as much as anybody else with the students who come to us every day. So we worked hard to get here, and maybe in health insurance, you know, we'll see if trending helps us, but I know the effort that went in to bring in the budget where we did, and, you know, as always, we also know that your charge and your work is not easy, and we respect that. So we're in dialogue, and as we go forward, if there are things that we need to look at or adjustments that you feel we need to make, we're, I know, and I can speak for the Board of Ed, that we're willing to go back to the table and try and figure that out.
Questions?
How, how are you coming along with the current budget? You're budgeted for 34, 552, and we've gone through seven months. Are you on time, below, above?
Yeah, so, so I think we're, we're pretty on target for where we usually are. We're estimating between 1% and 2% surplus, right, which is generally where we've been. So in, in the last, last several years, we have averaged, or in my tenure anyway, we have averaged about a 1.53, not about, a 1.53% surplus.
Could you be a little more accurate?
Yeah, I know. Well, I went back and looked, right, because I, I hear it a lot, and I just want to say, my philosophy is, and, and that has been embraced by the board, is we budget as tight as we can to what we know and what we can expect now for next year, and we project as best we can. And then it's my commitment that we manage the heck out of that budget. I, you know, we're looking at it constantly. I approve every expenditure in the district. There's nothing that doesn't go through Carolyn and me. We don't expend money if we don't need to. We've been able to kind of handle some changes that happen, and I'm happy to return a small amount of money. If we're returning huge amounts, then I'm not doing my job, right? And so to me...
Nor are we.
A, a 1 point, exactly. So to me, you know, that, that 1% to 2% on a $35 million, $34 million budget, if you give me $100, I'm giving you back $1.50 at the end of the year. You know, that's what we're trying to do. If I can, and I will say, in the first year of the budget, we returned $2,000. That wasn't a fun year. In the first year of my superintendency, we returned $2,000. But we've been, you know, we, we look carefully at all of our trending and, and try to make sure that, that, that isn't large amounts that we're just not expending and returning to you. But we're also not going on spending sprees, we're taking care of specific needs that may come up throughout the year. So this year, we, we really think we're in that same 1% to 2% amount, and we, Carolyn and I look at that and we refine it, and we've been updating the board, you know, along the way, and we'll continue to do that with you.
Is there a chance you could get us the actual seven-month totals?
Yeah, where we are right now?
Yeah, by, by the categories.
So we do a revenue and expenditure, I, I want to make sure we give you what you need. So each quarter, we do a revenue expenditure report for the board, and then that's given to Sue in finance. So that can show you just our expenditures, but we also, you know, 78% of our budget is the, well, a little less than 78 is our salaries, right? And so the salaries are encumbered, so you would want to see our encumbering, encumbrances, but we monthly look at those encumbrances, and if, we make sure that the encumbrances are accurate. So if someone leaves, if something changed, we're monitoring that. So I can give you our budget with the encumbrances to show you what the balances are.
That'd be good.
And then, you know, the anticipated expenses, we just went through that exercise, you know, with Carolyn and I and presented where we thought we were landing to the board. So I'll get you a few things, and then if it's not what you want, but...
Well, I'd be interested, you know, if, if you're gonna be at a 1% or 2% surplus.
Sure.
Is it any specific item that shows that surplus, or is it really spread out amongst a lot of categories?
No, it's usually in salaries and benefits, quite frankly, and it has to do with either, if there were retirements, but I would tell you, we're finding that our hires are, you know, often at higher levels. It's not like there's this dearth of new teachers that you can hire at a lower level. We're not seeing the differential. What, what some of the savings is in salaries has to do with family medical leave. If someone goes out on a maternity leave and stays out the 12 weeks, six weeks is unpaid. I don't know that until we get close. I, I know a couple people and we actually kind of budget for it, but I, I don't know that until we get into the school year. So I can give you the breakdown. But usually, there's some in salaries. Sometimes there's, there's been, you know, 100,000, maybe, maybe a little less, maybe a little more in benefits, in health benefits, because someone may, you know, we have some people move to family, but we have others who drop their dependent kids because they turned 26. So that's where there's a little bit of variability. And then we've had some savings in transportation because we've worked the schedule in the summer, and sometimes we can save a bus. So that's been a line item, sometimes a 40 or 50,000. And then there's, there's little bits, sometimes fuel for heat, if we have a good winter. We've had money in snow plowing, $20,000.
So far.
We just, we just brought that line down this year because our trending, thanks to a Board of Ed member who caught it, said, you know, we haven't had it in a while, so let's, let's shave that a little bit. So we have exactly where our surplus came from last year, and we can give you that, and then tell you where we think the surplus is this year.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll get you the, where, the projections of where we are, and then I can get you our estimates of where we think some of the surplus might be.
Thank you.
Okay? Is it okay if I do it from this object page?
Oh, yeah, that's exactly where I'd like this.
This is how we present it to the board, right? Okay.
So Mary Ann, I have a question.
Sure.
Because that's how I roll, right? Now, when you gave us the presentation last week, you had said that there were five certified or full-time employee cuts, or was it certified staff that were?
So there's 5.2 certified staff this year.
But I'm, okay, so my question comes from...
And there's also two para-educators.
I'm looking at last year's number of classroom teachers and this year's number of classroom teachers, and they're just the same.
They're just the same.
The classroom sizes are different, but...
So the place that we're, we're making the cut is at Elliott?
It's not in your report here. It shows six teachers.
So where I'm gonna, so I, I don't know, it could be because that's the way we're doing homerooms. I'll have to look at that section on Elliott, but I can tell you, we are reducing the split team at Elliott. And if you go to the Enrollment and Staffing Info section on page, let me get to the page.
Page 11 shows you that.
Is it page 11? Thank you, Tom.
Total certified FTE.
Yeah, so those are the totals along the bottom, but let me show you where it is. So we're going to elementary English Language Arts. So if you go on page 8, and halfway down under English Language Arts, you'll see Elliott goes from 6 to 5. Can you see that in the last, right?
Wait a minute, Elliott goes from 6 to 5, right?
Right?
Yeah.
And then in math, Elliott goes to 6, from 6 to 5.
Okay.
And then in science, it goes from 6 to 5.
Okay, those numbers aren't carried over on to page 7.
I need to look at that page, so I will look at it and correct it if necessary.
They're not there. And looking at this also, you're adding a social worker at Morgan?
So we are absorbing a social worker that has been paid through the grant, and we're moving that into the operating budget. That is correct.
Is this a good time to do that?
Yes.
What, and did the grant expire or something?
Yes, so that, that grant, we applied for and we planned for a certain number of positions. There's also four positions in the grant that we are not bringing into operating, but we brought our two behavior technicians and our social worker into operating. I have one more year of a elementary guidance counselor that's still in the grant, and then the remainder of that grant is for that big HVAC project at Joel. So that's where we are.
Well, and I have another question.
Sure.
Because of the, the enrollment, the changes in enrollment, there was a 60-student deficit between the enrollment last year and this year, or 53 students, according to the figures I have here. Next year, the enrollment is predicted to go down by 69 students. That is a colossal decline in enrolled students to justify, you know, a significant increase in the amount of dollars that the, the Board of Education takes from, from town capabilities here.
So in response to the declining enrollment, and I go back to those pages, you can kind of see what we've done from 2018, 19 is the first year we list on those pages, and you can kind of see where reductions have occurred. So we have been reducing staff at Joel as the numbers started to drop. We made a decision to close Pearson in the 2018, fall of 2018, and we closed that school and moved, and we reduced staff there, all levels of staff, including an administrator, some secretaries, custodians. So as we closed Pearson, we adjusted appropriately. And then as the reduction, if you look in this chart on page 5, you'll see, you know, the reduction is now moving to the high school. But as you're looking at that particular page, right, the graph of where we're gonna be, we are at the end of the enrollment decline. So there's still a couple of years, we're gonna go down about 30, and then it plateaus, and then it starts to go back up. So right now, our reductions have moved through Joel, Pearson, and Elliott, and now we're seeing the big class, the big class going out, leaving the senior class at Morgan, and what's backfilling is a little bit smaller. So we're gonna see the enrollment reductions start to impact Morgan. And we have to look at our comprehensive high school and all that we want to offer kids in light of that enrollment reduction and staffing as we go forward. This last, this staffing cut this year is primarily at Elliott, and that's as those students have moved out, our class sizes have dropped to a point that really don't meet what we need.
So if the staffing figures are changed to a 5, 5, 5, 5 here, you're still at the same size class levels or small, minimally higher than you were in the previous years. So it seems like that is a very, like, kind of a logical, no-brainer kind of cut there.
Correct.
I, I know we had this conversation last year about administration, and I know that is a very, very difficult subject. And I did some background work, and a, a number of years ago, the rate, we have 11 administrators, teacher, I mean, principals, assistant principals.
We have two in each school. And then we have two, four, five in central office, and a superintendent, an assistant superintendent, a special ed director, a special ed supervisor, and my business manager.
I, I took the number from, from the book. It's listed as 11.
Five in central office and six, there's a principal and assistant principal in each building. Correct.
So doing the math, as the enrollment declines, at, at its peak, well, no, I'll go back to 10 years ago, there were approximately 2,000 students in Clinton, and that, if you do, did the math for the number of administrators, and I'm not even talking about, I'm not gonna, well, anyway, there were approximately 181 students per administrator. I mean, I'm looking at the ratio of costs involved of administration per student, and we are now at, for '22, '22, year '22, '23, 135 students per administrator. And I know that it's apples to oranges, but is there, do you ever consider lightening the administrative load because it is such a high cost factor for the school system? I know, I have read of multiple school systems where you might have two schools whose enrollments have declined by significant numbers, which we're seeing at this point, where they would, they would have one principal oversee two schools with an assistant. with an assistant principal in each school. Have you ever thought about looking at something like that? Because when you eliminate teachers, you're taking the boots off the ground, as the cops would say. You know, there was talking about patrolman and boots on the ground. The teachers are the boots on the ground. And when you eliminate them, that's taking away from, from our, from the students. That's, that's the, that's the ultimate beneficiary. But keeping all the administrators at their higher salaries, it just, it just kind of, it really doesn't add up for me. I mean, one, I, this is absolutely nothing personal. I have no idea who, I mean, Kerry Hagnes is the only principal I know at this point. God bless Kerry Hagnes. I don't know who makes what or who is what or anything. But have you ever thought about lightening the administrative load in order to keep the teachers that are directly impacting, you know?
So what I can say is that every year, the Board of Ed evaluates the question about our staffing and it goes back to when Todd Pizepski actually was a member of our Board of Ed. He's the town treasurer, right? Nobody sees very often, right? And he was on our Board of Ed and his question to the board is we struggled with all of these numbers and bringing in something to the taxpayers was the bottom line is, are we staffed appropriately? And that question has become that overarching question that every year, since it's 78% of our budget, we need to ask ourselves that question. In alignment with that, the board looked at, with the administration, what are the appropriate levels of class sizes, ranges that we want to do? In addition, we looked at how do we sustain some continuity in class sizes and in staffing? So there are, there are times that I can cut a teacher in first grade because they have 10 less students one year, but then next year, they get 10 more and I'm going to have to move a teacher back. So that level of moving people around and inconsistency is difficult. But the question about class sizes and meeting needs of students is a really good one. And the question about administration is a good one, Carol. So in 2019, 20, right? We had a, a decline in students, but not a tremendous one. And we eliminated an administrator when we closed Pearson. All of the students from Pearson went to the two other schools. They all went. But I eliminated an administrator and essentially increased the load of student-to-administrator ratio, as well as teacher-to-administrator ratio. I think anybody who looks at the roles and responsibilities of an administrator 10 years ago to an administrator today with all of the state mandates, no offense, Chris, and all of the increase in liability, school security, social emotional learning, mental health issues, intervention, new innovation. I don't see any, in fact, I would love to, and many districts did with their ESAR funds that they got for COVID relief, they added administrators. We didn't. And we didn't, but we have, and I'm looking at a group out there and I know what the load and the responsibilities on an administrator today, right? Versus what it was. The expectations from a community to continue to maintain our schools and grow in a trajectory that meets the needs and the complex needs of kids and families in this community is absolutely governed by an administrator who then works with all of the staff members, all of the students, all of the families in the community. So if the load on an administrator was lessened, absolutely. But we have brought programs into the district. I talked to you tonight about nursing, right? We're taking that on. I'm not looking for a human resource person, I'm not adding a position. So I, I guess I want to say that we give you this chart partly because the question does come up about staffing and the board looks at it so that you can see that we have adjusted staff and in most cases reduced in response to declining enrollment. But then in other places, we have either added, right? A position, you asked me about the social worker, in order to meet the needs that are required of our students in our community. So I will respectfully say this, I, I don't see any way at this point in time to reduce an administrator, that's me. The Board of Ed also looked at all of our staffing and we made adjustments in a variety of categories. But in this case, I would say no. I don't think this is the year and I don't think it's the opportunity to reduce an administrator and share between two schools. We still are at 400 to 500 students in a building. And the, all of the extra requirements and layers of safety and security and learning for kids, that's a pretty high ratio. So you took the central office people and divided it out, so your number's a little lower. But ultimately, I have two people in each building. I have two people in special education, but I can give you the numbers of the increase in identified students in special education and the needs and the programs that we don't send as many kids out of district. We've built internal programs to meet the needs of our kids. But that takes oversight and it takes responsibility to reduce the liability on the part of the town. That's the obligation, but the question is asked every year and it is evaluated. It's not, we're not touching this group or that group. We look at all of our staffing as part of our process. So the demands are great, Carol, and our responsibilities are great to this community and to our students. So I don't take reducing teachers lightly, but I can tell you, at Elliott, now I, I held off on that cut because of COVID and because of the need that students have to keep class sizes low. But we currently have class sizes that are well below in a range at Elliott. And so that was part of what factored into this whole big picture of decisions that we make when it comes to staffing. But I sat here last week and I said, these are real people who have committed themselves to our kids and our community. And it doesn't come easy to have to say, I may not have a position for you next year. That's really hard to do.
Totally understand that, yeah.
And we're losing really quality people. But we're going to, we'll see what happens and we're going to make sure that they land someplace else and we're going to do our best to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All good? All right, thank you again, Mary Ann.
We appreciate all that you do and that.
And the Board of Ed, thank you.
Thank you.